The city of Barrie acknowledges the traditional territory of the Anishna'vi people, which include the Odawa, Ojibwe, and the Barawatami nations collectively known as the Three Fires Confederacy. We also acknowledge the Wednet Nation hereon who occupied these lands prior to the middle of the 17th century. We're dedicated to honoring indigenous history and culture and recognizing the enduring presence of indigenous peoples on this land. We're committed to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect with all First Nations, Métis, and Uwe people. You may be seated. Now, before we get going, if you're going to come into the chambers and sing like that, you're going to have to come back every council meeting because you're making the rest of us look bad, and we don't like that, you know?
It's the best.
Yeah, you sounded great today. You sounded great today. So you'll understand, if you're at home, why that sounded so good in a few minutes here. But before we go to that, we're going to go to student mayors with our deputy city clerk, Tracy McDonald. She's going to be welcoming somebody new. Before that, we're going to have a speech by our outgoing student mayor, Daniella Falconer Graham of Innisdale Secondary School. And Daniella was sworn in on the 5th of March for a three-week term of office, and I'd like to invite Daniella up to the mayor's seat, to the podium, to give some comments about your experiences here as student mayor. So I'm going to give you the chair, and I'm so glad that you were able to enjoy the three weeks and look forward to hearing about it.
I guess I'd like to say thank you for everyone welcoming you here. It's definitely been eventful. I've luckily gotten some of the shortest meetings, so that's been great. I think the only advice I could give to the next student mayor would be to try and pay attention. It can get lengthy sometimes. But I think that the wording for the oath that we did at the beginning is a little technical because I think that originally it did say about how we would not receive a reward for this, but I think the experience in itself is actually a reward. I think that's really all I have to say because I've only been here three days after all. Thank you.
Now, Daniella, before you go, we want to give you a certificate of recognition and gratefulness that you served the city as a student mayor. So on behalf of council and on behalf of the corporation, city of Barrie, I want to say thank you, congratulations, and we wish you nothing but the best in the future. And here's a certificate to go with you. I almost fell, and you might have had to sub in for me for the rest of the evening there. Well, thank you, Daniella. And we're now going to go over to our deputy clerk, Tracy, if you can take over and swear in our new incoming mayor.
I, Kenshin Rivera, having been elected to the office of student mayor for the period of March 26 to April 9, 2025, do solemnly promise and declare...
I, Kenshin Rivera, having been elected to the office of student mayor for the period of March 26 to April 9, 2025, do solemnly promise and declare...
That I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
That I will truly, faithfully, and impartially exercise this office to the best of my knowledge and ability.
That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner.
That I have not received and will not receive any payment or reward or promise thereof for the exercise of this office in a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner.
That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
That I will disclose any pecuniary interest, direct or indirect, in accordance with the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to His Majesty, King Charles III.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
And I make this solemn promise and declaration conscientiously, believing it to be true and knowing that it is of the same force and effect as if made under oath.
Now, if everyone can join me in welcoming Kenshin to his role as student mayor. Kenshin, Deputy Mayor Thompson will be able to help you. He was affectionately named Deputy Dude by another student mayor, so you can refer to him as Deputy Mayor Thompson or Deputy Dude. And the secret, the good secret, is that he always has mints you can chew on. So if you have any questions, he'll be able to walk you through the meeting. And before we say goodbye to Daniella, I just want to point out that that was a speech without notes, which we don't often see around here, and really well done. So well done, Daniella. We're going to move on after we introduce council. So I'd ask council to begin, and Ward 1, that's...
Welcome, Your Worship. My name's Claire Ripma. I'm the councillor for Ward 1.
Welcome, Mayor Rivera. I'm councillor Gary Harvey in Ward 7.
Welcome and congratulations, Kenshin. I am councillor Jim Harris, councillor for Ward 8.
Welcome, councillor, Your Worship. Sergeant Morales, Ward 9 councillor.
And welcome. I'm Bryn Hamilton, Ward councillor for Ward 10.
And, Your Worship, my name's Alex Nuttall. I serve as mayor in the city of Barrie here, so I look forward to working with you over your time in the office. So welcome to council. We're going to continue through the meeting, and so when you look at page 2 of your city council notes, you'll see at the top there, Kenshin, that there are the confirmation of the minutes. This is item 5 on the city council agenda, and the minutes are from the meeting for March 5, 2025. They've been circulated. Are there any questions or corrections that are required with regards to the minutes as printed? I'm not seeing any, so we're going to consider those adopted as printed and circulated. There is, in terms of number 6 on our agenda, one item that's listed under awards and recognition. And I'm going to speak a little bit about this from here first, and then I'm going to come over to the podium to provide the awards themselves. But I would be remiss if I didn't encourage you to go and look at the executive committee meeting from earlier this evening, if you get a chance to jump onto our YouTube or on the city website, because we did talk a little bit about the Performing Arts Centre and an update on that, so I'm sure you'll be interested in that as well. Tonight, we have the recognition of Anna Goldsmith, Maya McNair, and Delilah Johnstone, winners of the North American Teachers of Singing competition. They emerged top of their class at the recent North American Teachers of Singing Ontario Competition hosted by Wilford Lurie University Faculty of Music, Waterloo, Ontario. Anna Goldsmith won first place out of all North America in her category at the National Nats US Competition last year in Knoxville, Tennessee. These are significant accomplishments for Anna, Maya, and Delilah that can only be achieved through thousands of hours of practice, hard work, and dedication, and the years of support from their teachers and parents. The recipients have represented our city and the region exceptionally well. So I'm going to come over to the podium, and the first individual I'm going to ask to come down and meet me is Anna Goldsmith. It's already on. Perfect. So Anna was first place in the Ontario North American Teachers of Singing and the National North American Teachers of Singing Competitions for ages 17 and 18 in the commercial music category. So on behalf of Barrie City Council and certainly the entire city who's watching your blooming talent, we want to say congratulations and thank you for representing us so incredibly well.
Yes, thank you so much. I'm just going to say something really quick. I don't know how these mics work, but I think I'm doing okay. But I just wanted to say thank you so much to Scott and the Barrie City Council for making this happen, as well as my singing teacher, Margot. She's been my singing teacher forever, and she's just such an amazing person. Thank you.
Amazing. And Anna, if you can perhaps stay up here, because I think we'll do a group photo afterwards as well, if that's okay with you. I'm now going to call upon Maya McNair, first place in the Ontario North American Teachers of Singing Competition for ages 15 to 16 years of age in the musical theatre category. So I'd like to call you up. Come and join us, and congratulations.
I would just like to say thank you to Scott and the Barrie Arts Council. Thank you to Moving Arts Centre of Performing Arts, which has been my musical theatre company for a few years, and thank you to Margot Hamilton, my vocal teacher.
Thank you so much. And next, and last but not least, Delilah Johnstone, first place in the Ontario North American Teachers of Singing Competition for ages 13 to 16 years in the music theatre category also. And I believe she's unable to attend, so Margot Hamilton will be coming down and accepting on behalf. You've been thanked tonight, and you get someone else's award. This is a great night for you, Margot.
I just wanted to thank the entire mayor Nuttall and the entire Barrie City Council for honoring the arts and all the hard work and dedication that these students put into honing the craft in their artistry. It's so great to see it recognized here. Thank you so much.
So Eric, do you want to take the photo? Oh, we're going across the other side. Perfect. Nick is going to take the photo for us. Are you coming down? Good? Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
We certainly have some talented young people in Barrie, and so it's really nice that we get to do this. But remember, two weeks tonight, city council, you're expected to come back and sing again, okay? Again, congratulations on behalf of council. If you'd like to go, we understand. If you want to stay because it's riveting, you're welcome to stay as well, but don't feel like you have to for the rest of the evening. So congrats again. Members of council, we're going to move into tax applications, which is definitely the most riveting. So Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, tax application to council for cancellation, reduction, and additions of tax dated March 26, 2025.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that the tax applications to council for cancellation, reduction, or addition of taxes dated March 26, 2025, that the list of applications to council for cancellation, reduction, or additions of taxes dated 26 of March 2025, submitted by the treasurer in the amount of $251.38, be approved. Any questions or comments with regards to the $258? Seeing none, all those in favor? Let those who don't believe that we watch every dollar take note of that. We're going to move into the committee reports. So let's back to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section A of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be received.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section A of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be received. This is 25G032, reported to the executive committee dated February 26. 25G033, reported to the community safety committee dated February 26. 25G034, reported to the affordability committee dated February 26. 25G05, reported to the finance and responsible governance committee dated March 5. 25G036, reported to the infrastructure and community investment committee dated March 5. Any questions or comments with regards to the reports? Seeing none, all those in favor? That carries, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section B of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson and seconded by councillor Harvey, that section B of the general committee report dated the 26 of March 2025, now circulated, to be adopted. This is 25G037, the walkway winter maintenance pilot for 2026 budget. Terms of reference, 25G038, which I believe is in regards to the, is that to the executive committee? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Perfect. Motion 24G142, referred by general committee on May 29, 2024, adult school crossing guard program. 25G040, pedestrian safety, Duckworth and Napier. 25G041, investigation stoplight at Johnson Street and Grove Street intersections. 25G042, red light cameras. 25G043, municipal heritage register listed property at 64 Mary Street. 25G044, request of expression of interest attracting new town crier. 25G045, the 2024 fraud and wrongdoing program activity, 2024 summary of internal audit activity, and the 2025 internal audit work plan. 25G046, Barrie Community Tennis Club fee increase. 25G047, community project submission, councillor Hamilton, bench at Wilkins Park. 25G048, community project submission for councillor Hamilton, bike racks. 25G049, community project submission from councillor Hamilton, solar lights at Goldameta Park. 25G050, community project submission for councillor Harvey, and it is the Barrie Sports Hall of Fame. 25G051, zoning bylaw amendment 282, King Street, Ward 7. Any questions or concerns regarding that business? I will not read it again, no. Seeing none, all those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section C of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section C of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, to be adopted. This is 25G052, capital grants and infrastructure funding. Any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing none, all those in favor? It carries. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section D of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
Helps if it's on. Moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section D of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, to be adopted. 25G053, the 2025 Housing Community Improvement Plan, CIP programs and budget. Any questions or comments? Counsel Morales.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Just reiterating my potential pecuniary interest from general committee, as the integrity commissioner has ruled that I have a potential pecuniary interest on this matter, so I will not vote on this matter.
Thank you, councillor Morales. Has the potential pecuniary interest been noted by the clerk?
Yes, Mayor Nuttall.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments with regards to the motion? I'm not seeing any, so all those in favor? That carries unanimously. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section E of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section E of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, to be adopted. This is 25G054, city initiated official plan amendment to be consistent with provincial planning statement, 2024. Any questions or comments with regards to this motion for the referral? Seeing none, all those in favor? And it carries unanimously. Deputy Mayor Thompson.
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section F of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, be adopted.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by councillor Harvey, that section F of the general committee report dated March 26, 2025, now circulated, to be adopted. 25G055, these are design principles to support livability, municipal operations, and road safety. This motion was referred back to staff. Are there any questions or comments from members of council with regards to the referral motion back to staff? I'm not seeing any, all those in favor? It carries. And that concludes our committee business for this evening. There's no deferred business. But we do have a couple of direct motions, I believe, and I'm going to ask that we go to, initially to councillor Harris. You have a direct motion for this evening yourself.
Yes, and thank you, Mayor Nuttall. It's moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. Motion without notice, flagpole at first responders campus, that pursuant to section 7.1 of procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice regarding a flagpole at the first responders campus.
Thank you, madam deputy clerk. It's moved by councillor Harris and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson, the motion without notice, flagpole at first responders campus pursuant to section 7.1 of the procedure of bylaw 2019-100. Permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning a flagpole at the first responders campus. This vote requires a two-thirds majority, as it's a motion without notice, so I'm going to go to the floor. All those in favor? It carries. And I'm going to go back to councillor Harris.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. It's moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson, that notwithstanding procurement bylaw 2024-075, staff in the corporate facilities department retain a company to construct a flagpole up to 150 feet, or 42.75 meters, at the first responders campus by no later than July 1, 2025, Canada Day, with a project budget of $250,000, pardon me, to be funded from the reinvestment reserve.
It's moved by councillor Harris and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson, that a flagpole at the first responders campus, and notwithstanding the procurement bylaw 2024-075, staff in the corporate facilities department retain a company to construct a flagpole up to 150 feet, or 42.75 meters, at the first responders campus by no later than July 1, 2025, with a project budget of $250,000 to be funded from the reinvestment reserve. And so I'm going to consider that on the floor. I'll go to you. Just before I do, I just want to make sure the wording's correct, if that's okay. With regards to the budget, it's up to $250,000. Mr. CAO, is that how you interpret that, is you're being given direction to deal with this?
That's correct, Mayor Nuttall. If passed by council tonight, it would be up to $250,000. We are still working on the cost estimates, so we have asked council if they wish to pursue this. They give us an upset limit. Obviously, our goal is to come in below that.
Okay, thank you. Over to you, councillor Harris. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. So fairly self-explanatory, I think. People know right now the important time in our history that we're in, and many of you, probably like I am, are receiving lots of comments and suggestions from residents about how we could honor our country and proudly display our flag. I'm seeing other municipalities as well taking meaningful actions to proudly display the Maple Leaf, and I think this is an opportunity for us to do, and also do it in a way that creates a long-term legacy. So hopefully, the members of council will be supportive of this. I think it's a well-intended effort, a really important symbol of our country and our sovereignty, and I hope you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harris. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Corser.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to, I will guess, CEO Prouse, because I don't know who I'd be asking for this, is a zoning bylaw. A wonderful idea. I'm just wondering, with 150 feet, is there any regulations or anything about height that we need to look into or have a conversation about? Is there any, was there anything on the books that would stand in the way of putting this up?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Corser. I'll take the first kick at it, and then I see Ms. Banfield is prepared to speak to the zoning piece. There are a number of regulations and restrictions when you are looking at a piece of infrastructure that tall. Staff have done an initial review. We're pretty comfortable that the location that is in the motion would fit and meet all of the needs, but perhaps just on the zoning piece, Ms. Banfield?
Through you, Mayor Nuttall, to councillor Corser. The zoning bylaw specifically says flagpoles are not subject to the zoning bylaw or any of the standards within.
Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you. I'm in support.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Councillor Harvey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Nuttall. Definitely support this, and actually, I guess to give someone a little perspective, there is a similar type of flagpole just off of Maple View. Exact footage in comparison to 150, I couldn't tell you, but it's rather large. So, and obviously, with this location that's being proposed is right on the side of the 400, so I don't think we could choose a better spot if you did. So definitely happy to support this, and thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to give a comment on this. I think there's a few things, a few reasons why this is important. Obviously, the timing we're in. We are the benefactor of being on the side of the 400 series highway, a 400 series highway that has a ton of traffic year-round, but no time more than Canada Day. And to be able to provide that symbol, and that's all this is, it is a symbol. This doesn't change the world. But to provide that symbol and that opportunity for folks to take notice, take note, and feel that civic pride as they're going through the city of Barrie, I think, is incredible. Our city has a tremendous amount of history attached to that flag being what it is and not something else. When you look at the War of 1812 and the attachment between the Nine Mile Portage and what came out of the city of Barrie or through the city of Barrie, Sir Robert Barrie, over into Georgian Bay, Lake Huron, and eventually taking Fort Mackinaw, a fort that the Americans have never won but twice been defeated at, I must note. And I think it is really important. The other piece that I think is important is this, is that symbol is not...
I think it's a well-intended effort, a really important symbol of our country and our sovereignty, and I hope you support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Any other questions or comments? Counsel Corser.
Thank you, through you, Mayor Noddle, to, I will guess, CEO Prowse, because I don't know who I'd be asking for this, as a zoning bylaw. A wonderful idea. I'm just wondering, with 150 feet, is there any regulations or anything about height that we need to look into or have a conversation about? Is there any, was there anything on the books that would stand in the way of putting this up?
Through you, Mayor Noddle, to Counsel Corser. I'll take the first kick at it, and then I see Ms. Banfield is prepared to speak to the zoning piece. There are a number of regulations and restrictions when you are looking at a piece of infrastructure that tall. Staff have done an initial review. We're pretty comfortable that the location that is in the motion would fit and meet all of the needs. But perhaps just on the zoning piece, Ms. Banfield?
Through you, Mayor Noddle, to Counsel Corser. The zoning bylaw specifically says flagpoles are not subject to the zoning bylaw or any of the standards within.
Okay, that's wonderful, thank you. I'm in support.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Counsel Harvey.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Noddle. Definitely support this. And actually, I guess to give someone a little perspective, there is a similar type of flagpole just off of Mapleview. Exact footage in comparison to 150, I couldn't tell you, but it's rather large. So, and obviously with this location that's being proposed is right on the side of the 400, so I don't think we could choose a better spot if you did. So definitely happy to support this, and thank you for bringing this forward.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would like to give a comment on this. I think there's a few things, a few reasons why this is important. Obviously, the timing we're in. We are the benefactor of being on the side of the 400 series highway. A 400 series highway that has a ton of traffic year-round, but no time more than Canada Day. And to be able to provide that symbol, and that's all this is. It is a symbol, this doesn't change the world. But to provide that symbol and that opportunity for folks to take notice, take note, and feel that civic pride as they're going through the city of Barry, I think, is incredible. Our city has a tremendous amount of history attached to that flag being what it is and not something else. When you look at the War of 1812 and the attachment between the Nine Mile Portage and what came out of the city of Barry or through the city of Barry, Sir Robert Barry, over into Georgian Bay, Lake Huron, and eventually taking Fort Mackinaw, a fort that the Americans have never won but twice been defeated at, I must note. And I think it is really important. The other piece that I think is important is this, is that symbol is not just amazing for Canadians. It's amazing for the amount of Americans that will be visiting Muskoka in the summertime, which is a, not a negative piece, it is a positive piece. And there's a reason they like to come here, it's because they like our country as much as we do. And being able to see that and understand it, I think, symbolically is a great thing for the country. It's a great thing for the city. And my hope is that our business community also follows suit. And that when we're coming through Barry, it's a place of refuge, it is a place of welcoming to new communities, and it is a place that we are incredibly proud of the country that we are and what we do. So I'll leave it at that, because I'm sure we could all speak for hours about how much we love Canada, and that's a good thing, but we don't have hours. So call the vote, all those in favor? And it carries. And I believe we have a second direct motion here this evening. I'm going to go over to Counsel Harvey. The floor is yours, sir.
Great, thank you, Mayor Noddle. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. Motion without notice, correspondence to the township of Oremodonte concerning the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation Authority and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning correspondence to the township of Oremodonte concerning the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority.
It's moved by Counsel Harvey and seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. A motion without notice, correspondence to the township of Oremodonte concerning the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authorities, that pursuant to Section 7.1 of the procedural bylaw 2019-100, permission be granted to introduce a motion without notice concerning correspondence to the township of Oremodonte concerning the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authorities. Two-thirds vote, as this is a motion without notice, all those in favor? It carries. I'm going to go back over to Counsel Harvey.
Thank you, Mayor Noddle. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. Correspondence to the township of Oremodonte concerning Nottowasaga Valley Conservation and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, that the city clerk prepare correspondence to the township of Oremodonte indicating that the city of Barry has been, has seen positive progress with the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation Authority and is not prepared to support the amalgamation of the NVCA and the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, and that a copy of this correspondence be circulated to the NVCA, LSRCA, affected municipalities, and local MPPs.
It's moved by Counsel Harvey, seconded by Deputy Mayor Thompson. Correspondence to the township of Oremodonte concerning the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation and Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, that the city clerk prepare correspondence to the township of Oremodonte indicating that the city of Barry has been, seen positive progress with the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation Authority and is not prepared to support the amalgamation of the NVCA and the Lake Simcoe Region Conservation Authority, and that a copy of this correspondence be circulated to the NVCA, the LSRCA, affected municipalities, and local MPPs. I'll go over to Counsel Harvey, floor is yours.
Great, thank you, Mayor Noddle. As many probably are already aware, there has been a process initiated by the township of Oremodonte to have the province look at amalgamation of the NVCA. The NVCA is made up of 18 municipalities. We're at the far east end of that watershed. And when you look at the far west end, it goes all the way out to the Blue Mountains and also places like Mulmer. This motion is kind of timely when it came to when Oremodonte brought forward this process, because it was right at the time, just before Christmas, when the CAO of the NVCA was retiring, and it wasn't long thereafter that this was brought forward. Our interim CAO has been doing a fabulous job at reviewing all the processes and trying to fix some of the concerns that were brought forward by Oremodonte, and some of which are concerns that some of the other member municipalities have had in the past. And I'm happy to report that there's been quite a bit of success in that, even when it comes to permitting. Now, things have gone electronic, the way permitting is here at the city of Barry. They're also just finishing the process for confirming a new CAO for the NVCA, which I'm anticipating will probably be announced sometime next week. But when it comes to the timing of this, I just think it's horrific that they would start a process like this while you're in the midst of retaining a new CAO. While the, and the NVCA itself was never consulted with this proposal ahead of it going forward. Our new chair, Jonathan Scott from Bradford, and our past chair, who's now our vice chair, have had meetings with their mayor, their deputy mayor, and also their council in regards to that, to stress that they don't believe that amalgamation is the right idea. For nearly a century, conservation authorities have been a uniquely Ontario way to protect our environment based on geography and ecology of watersheds. And simply ramming two separate watersheds together into one large authority is contrary to the purpose of how we structure our conservation authorities. And when you look at the way the two watersheds are, one is lake-based, one is river-based, I just don't see the connection there. Also, too, when you look at, what this is really causing is a distraction to the real solutions when it comes to operational challenges. The NVCA, as I mentioned, has already made several changes to improve service delivery, and that we don't necessarily need an expensive and disruptive restructuring to make any operational changes. Instead of focusing on getting results, amalgamation would pull us into bureaucratic debates over governance, jurisdiction, and administration. It's pretty simple. This, will this proposal improve any service? Right now, there's no evidence that that would be the case. There's been no business case and no evidence of any benefits. No independent studies ever been done in regards to amalgamation along with any costs in savings or better service. No analysis has ever been undertaken. This is the definition of putting the carp before the horse. Without any expert analysis, we can simply rely on general evidence that larger entities often mean higher costs, slower approvals, less local control, and more red tape opposed to efficiencies. The NVCA is already acting on improving their efficiencies, and why gamble on a merger with no clear benefits being outlined? A bigger bureaucracy, most likely based in Newmarket as the initiator of this proposal is also the vice chair of the Lake Simcoe Regional Conservation Authority, is just bad decision-making for local decisions. A merged authority would presumably be headquartered in Newmarket, as indicated. Pulling decision-making away from local communities. And we're actually the largest member of the NVCA, and the voice is even that much stronger when it comes to the smaller municipalities as you get further west away from where we border the Lake Simcoe Regional Conservation Authority. The NVCA was created to serve this watershed, Georgian Bay, and the Nottowasaga River, and not to be absorbed into a mega authority where local voices get lost. Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority similarly was created to protect Lake Simcoe with special powers to develop review under the Lake Simcoe Protection Act. We need local conservation, decisions made locally, and not by an entity managing two very different watersheds across a huge area of southern Ontario. In closing, we've already had a few municipalities do this exact same thing, already passed motions not favouring moving forward with this, or as it does move forward to a potential meeting, that there would not be support for this. And one of the more recent ones was at the town of Wasaga Beach, who's actually been one of, I'd say, the loudest critics of the NVCA over the last two terms that I've been there. And even at their meeting, they saw the change, and the mayor was very clear in his comments that with what he has seen, that at this point in time, they definitely do not support any amalgamation between the two conservation authorities. And when you look at the way the NVCA is laid out and the type of watershed that it is, it actually makes far more sense, if there was going to be any amalgamation, that it would actually go the other direction to the west, and that they're a lot more similar to Grey Sobble Conservation Authority than they are Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority. So those are my comments. I hope everybody around the table supports this and sends a message to Oremodonte that we do not support this process that they have initiated.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to go over to Deputy Mayor Thompson. Any other speakers? Then Counsel Corser, then Counsel Reetma. And that's it? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Noddle. So I had a few other questions, but your explanation was great, and I second the motion. But there was no study done, no cost and no benefits analysis, is that correct? That's kind of what you said.
Yeah, to date, there's been no analysis or any documentation brought forward, and that type of conversation was brought up in the previous meetings that our chair had with the mayor of Oremodonte.
And you made a comment that this was never presented without the motion, like something discussed, like a mediation or something? Like it was just kind of presented at their council without any notice?
Yes, that's correct. It became, obviously, when it went public on their agenda, was the point, when it became known that this is the process that they intended to move forward. There was no discussions or any hint of this leading up to that motion coming forward.
Yeah, I'll make a comment. I find it ironic that, you know, we've tried to work with them and, you know, been very open, and they complained about the process and stuff, and then they, you know, this is the actions of it. But I'll leave it with this, it's nice to know that Oremodonte is interested in amalgamation.
I'll leave that comment there. Counsel Corser.
Yeah, thank you. Just a comment through you, I guess, just a, I know that the, my understanding was that this was taken, undertaken because of inefficiencies and issues with the Nottowasaga Valley Conservation Authority that were happening. And I'm really happy to hear that there's been a lot of positive work done and that there is more stability within the leadership. So yeah, that's really good to hear.
Thank you, Counsel Corser. Counsel Reetma.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to take off my LSRCA hat and look at this just strictly from the city of Barry. And I would like to suggest that city of Barry is in two watersheds. And I think that it would be useful if we were in one watershed, just simply because if we deal with one organization, I think it's much more efficient and it's better from our staff perspective. The other thing that I would like to say is that I think there, I mean, I applaud the conservation authority, NVCA, for doing what they're doing. Certainly, as conservation authorities, we're all judged by the weakest link. And certainly, NVCA, over the past number of decades, actually, has been a very weak link in the CA world. So I'm thankful that they're moving in the right direction, I think that's a good thing. I don't know whether that will be sufficient or not. And I think personally, I would like to see a report from our staff about what the benefits might be to the city if there was amalgamation, or what the dis-benefits might be if there was an amalgamation. So a benefit analysis of what our city's position should be, because I'm not so sure that it is necessarily either the merger or not a merger. I'd like to know that. So I would like to move a motion to refer this to staff for a report.
So that would be a, an amendment. You would need to have a mover and a seconder for that amendment. And it's not debatable. Am I right about that? Referral's not debatable, deferral is debatable. So while you're working on that, Counselor, because you need to have that in order for it to be put on the floor. So I'm going to leave that with you. I'm just actually going to go to CEO Prowse as well, and you had your hand up. I think I saw, okay, so sorry, Brian, sorry, Counsel Hamilton. I, AKA Brian, I did see CEO Prowse first. And just confirm for me when you're going to speak as well. Do we have the experts on the conservation authorities? Or do they have the experts on the conservation authorities? So I'll leave that to you.
Thank you, Mayor Noddle. Through you to members of council, and you teed up my response anticipating that Counsel Reetma is going to write out the motion. I'm not sure how much information city staff actually can provide to council on this decision. We don't know what amalgamation looks like. I think Counsel Harvey's already indicated that no analysis has yet been done on the savings, if that's what the goal is. And frankly, we don't actually know the goal today. I'm not sure city staff are equipped to give council that information. If council wants to talk about the level of service we get from one versus the other, we can provide that information, but it is just one piece of a much larger puzzle. And I think none of that information speaks to whether amalgamation is beneficial to the city of Barry. So I'm, to be honest with you, not sure we can actually answer the question, even if referred to us.
Counsel Hamilton, I'm going to go to you next.
Yeah, thank you, and through you, and that was largely kind of what I was going to get to as well, is I see where Counsel Reetma's going, but I don't know how staff would answer that. I think we're missing a big chunk of information. And again, I don't have a lot of background in it, I don't know how LSRCA is run, or NV, NVCA? Not, I know, what's the acronym? NVCA is run either. So for me, I mean, to say we don't support it or support it, I really don't know. I think the fact that the conversation's happening is a good thing. I think, you know, there are sometimes a lot of benefits that come with amalgamations, you know, in terms of efficiencies and minimizing costs. There's also some cons, as Counsel Harvey alluded to. So for me, like, who would be the appropriate decision-maker or entity to actually do a feasibility cost-benefit analysis? And not just from the perspective of the city of Barry, right? What's it going to mean for us, for bottom line? But just really in terms of how the organizations are run in general. So that, to me, like, I'm happy to say, no, we don't support it at this time, but I am actually interested in continuing the conversation and looking at what the benefit would be to us as a city, but broader than that. So I don't know where that goes.
If I can take that as a question?
Yes, question mark.
I think probably the best way to approach this is to go back to the origin of it, right? And so, you know, I recognize that the Counsel has to have his counsel hat on right now, right? So I'm not going to go over to him at this point. But I think it's important to go back to the origin, which was moving at the Lake Simcoe Regional Conservation Authority, that conversation about this, that eventually went over to the township of Oremodonte, as I understand it. No, it went straight from the township of Oremodonte?
Let me just put on my LSRCA hat. And that is to say, LSRCA has no horse in this race. We really don't, as a board, we have no interest in this at all. And if, this is a matter of all of the municipalities that are part of LSRCA and NVCA. It's the municipalities that decide on this question, not the board, not the board of LSRCA, not the board of NVCA. It's the municipalities themselves. And yes, Oremodonte started this, and it set a process in motion. But it has nothing, nothing to do with LSRCA.
Okay, so because you've interjected, I'm going to ask a question. So it's a coincidence that the deputy chair of the LSRCA moved a motion with his council to remove the NVCA from existence?
Yes.
It's a coincidence?
But let me add, you know, I mean, apparently, Oremodonte is part of three conservation authorities. And And apparently, according to him, they've had issues with NVCA for many years. But, you know, again, from an LSRA perspective, you know, like, we have nothing, I mean, if there's a merger, fine, I mean, our door's open, let's put it that way. But we have no interest in this one way or the other. And that's why I was very careful when I started my initial comments, that I've got my city hat on and I want to know what the best course of action for the city is. And I think that there has been, over the last number of decades, a distinct difference between LSRA and NVCA in terms of their relationship with the city and with the development community and with anyone else that they touch. And so...
Point of clarity, Mayor Nettle. I know we're only allowed to speak once and I think what's happening now is going beyond answering the question that arose and the counselors being afforded a second opportunity to speak. And there's just one thing that I would like to clarify that wasn't totally accurate that was just spoken of, if I'm able to.
So I'm going to, I'm going to give 15 seconds to close out to Counselor Reetma. Recognizing you're right, I let him go a second time. And if there's a point of privilege for the organization or yourself that you need to raise, then we'll do that point in 15 seconds.
Great, thank you.
I don't have anything more to say.
Look at that. There's a point of privilege being called for in terms of...
Yeah, I just wanted to provide some clarity in regards to the comment about Oromodonte being part of three different conservation authorities. It's not totally accurate. They're part of two conservation authorities, NVCA and Lake Simcoe. The third that is within their area is actually a conservation association who has no powers like a conservation authority does. Why that exists, who knows? Apparently, it's a one-off, so I just wanted to provide that clarity.
Thank you. Okay. So before we keep going, as I was, I was actually speaking to Counselor Hamilton's question when it was asked, is that I think that the individual who should provide this information is the one who's making the case, right? And that didn't originate here and apparently didn't originate at the LSRA, although there seems to be a coordination between. You know, I think that's a question we should be asking them. The other thing I find particularly interesting is, you know, you're talking about a full amalgamation and to use a, you know, Deputy Mayor Thompson's comparator, if you will, you're talking about a full amalgamation with no information and no push out to the why. Like, I don't see any correspondence that's telling us why, why. You take that and compare it with the process that we're going through, not for an amalgamation, but for a tiny piece of property to be able to deliver on jobs and housing, where we have, I guess, I think, Mr. CEO, am I off being able to talk about dollars on reports? Or is that public or not public?
I apologize, Mayor Nettle. I'm not sure I fully follow your lead and I'm afraid of where you're going, to be honest.
The dollars for reports for the annexation? Am I allowed to talk about the amount of money that we're spending into reports at this point or is that not public or public or?
Mayor Nettle, I think you can talk about the dollar value. I don't think that, those, I think that's fair ground.
Okay, so to get a very small thing to happen, we're in excess of $300,000 at this point, right? Because we've made our case, but we also have to have the fundamental what and where and all of those things. And just, I see zero of that. Like, this to me just looks like a grenade was thrown into multiple camps, maybe including the LSRA, with none of the backup. If this compelling case that gets brought forward to us, then I think we should have that discussion at that point and go from there.
Yes, so I call it a comment, thank you through you. I just wonder then, in our written letter back, if we can at least state that, right? Like, we don't support it because there's absence of information, case costing, benefit analysis, feasibility analysis. Like, I think if, it would be helpful to actually say that as opposed to just, nope.
I think that we can, if you'd like, I could craft a letter after council approves that includes all of those items.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. And there's probably some things that we're missing this evening, so I'll work with our intergovernmental affairs folks to make sure we get it right. But I can certainly include that in a letter. I didn't see any other hand. Oh, a hand.
Thank you through you, Mayor Nettle. Just quickly, perhaps Counselor Harvey. So I'm reading the context that I have it, which is the motion without notice. Are we being asked specifically to respond or is this a proactive response in your approach where you're asking us as a council to express that we're not supporting it as a municipality? I'm just wondering if we've been asked to respond or are we potentially jumping into something that we could potentially get more information on first before a formal letter?
Counselor.
We haven't been, through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Corser, or Counselor Congle. No, we haven't been formally asked. It's just that, obviously, as your rep on the NVCA, I thought that it was important to bring this forward. And also too, there have been at least six municipalities that I'm aware of that have already passed a similar, if not identical, motion because the sentiment around the NVCA table is not supporting what's being brought forward. Because it's literally just willy-nilly one municipality that decided, we think this is a good idea, so we're going to, and there is a section in the Conservation Act that permits that. And the other piece that the municipality wasn't totally aware of is that they're also on the hook for all costs as a result of this too. So whenever a meeting potentially could be brought forward, all of the costs will be bared by that one municipality that triggered the process.
Follow-up, if I may. Counselor Harvey, do you have a board meeting coming up and will this be tabled as a bit more of a broader conversation or is this coming out of a NVCA board conversation around going to respective municipalities to get letters of support for non-amalgamation? So Oro didn't ask, but is the board asking?
Through Mayor Nettle to Counselor Congle, there wasn't a formal request. The board itself has had the motion on the table at our previous board meeting and we all voted against amalgamation. And obviously, there was a discussion around that. And ironically, even the representative from Oromodonte, who voted in favor of it when it was brought forward at their council to trigger this, voted against it at the NVCA. So like, I mean, there's no formal request. This is being brought forward by me, following suit with many other municipalities. There's 18 in the NVCA, so far six that I'm aware of have already passed this motion. And I'll be quite honest with you, a couple of the council meetings that I've watched that did already pass this, didn't quite get into, I was not anticipating such a back-and-forth debate. It was pretty unanimous, especially with Wasaga Beach, who has been much louder than Oromodonte, to be quite honest with you, over my two terms on the NVCA in regards to some of their concerns. And they actually spoke totally against any of this.
Sorry, just before you continue, I want to, I think there was a part of your question that I want to make sure gets answered there, because you said, are we just, you said, is this something that's coming forward from there or are we just jumping in the center of it? Once it's triggered by Oromodonte, you are in the center of it because we, as a municipality, are going to be asked to weigh in. At this point, what I'm hearing around the table is, we're not prepared to support something we know nothing about. And so that needs to then be communicated back to Oromodonte. But you're not stepping into something that you wouldn't otherwise have to step into because either I, through a budgetary item, using strong mayors, or you through council, we through council, would have to take some sort of position and send folks over that would constitute some sort of weighted vote, as I understand, over there to determine what to do. And I assume we would then have to vote on the other side with the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority on some sort of weighted vote in order to accept a merger, because if there's a merger, I assume that both of them would have to say yes to it.
Mr. Mayor, I've already spoken too often already, but I could...
Counselor Congle does have the floor. I will ask you in the form of a question after.
Thank you. Maybe my next question will tie a bit into that because I'm not clear from a governance structure. If we could get clarification through you, Counselor Harvey, and then anyone else can weigh in that has maybe the information. I'm hearing that the board of NVCA is not the decision maker, that it's the respective municipalities, but is not the board made up of representatives of municipalities. So whose vote carries it? Are we saying that should there be a change, that at one level of governance, I'll call it the NVCA board, with representatives from vested municipalities, they can't enact an amalgamation intention? It's got to actually go to each individual municipalities for a vote at that municipal council level. Is that correct? And that's the majority of that? I'm looking to clarify. I'm seeing different non-verbals.
Does, has it go through a vote? No?
Yeah, just, I'll let Madam Clerk, okay, go ahead. CEO.
Mayor Nettle and members of council, my preliminary review of it and my understanding of it is as follows. The question of amalgamation is triggered by a member municipality. At some point, if they continue to pursue that amalgamation, there will be a joint meeting of both conservation authorities municipalities. Basically, there are shareholders in those two conservation authorities. Based on population effectively, they will have a weighted vote. The combined group will have a weighted vote. That combined group will then vote either in favor of amalgamation or not. So there won't be two separate meetings or two separate votes and it isn't effectively at the council level. Should this process continue, at some point, your staff will come to you and say, this meeting is coming up, here's your options. Effectively, council has a couple of options. One of them could be you assign a representative and you let them vote freely, or you assign a representative and you give them council direction that says you go to this meeting and vote X. And once you get to that meeting, they'll tally the votes, they'll know whether they have support for amalgamation or not. It's kind of a convoluted process, but I think that's about as clear as I can provide it. And if Counselor Reetma has additional, I think I've captured everything, but...
Yes, I think the CEO has said it quite well.
Okay, good. Back to Counselor Congle.
Point of clarity, and I think I have it through CEO Proust. So in effect, your direction would come from your respective council to the representative on the board, but it's actually the conservation board that's casting the vote on members around the table?
No, no, no. Our council would either vote or give the power to vote to a representative on behalf of council.
And the power to vote actually has to reflect the will of that council, cannot be changed at the board. It's directive.
We can either vote as a council and make the decision. CEO Proust, the council can make the decision or we can designate someone to make the decision on our behalf that we, as a member of council, going to set.
That is my understanding, Mayor Nettle. Council doesn't have to take a position on it. They can assign a representative, as you do today. Counselor Harvey represents you on the Nautu-Wasaga and Counselor Reetma on the Lake Simcoe. They are free to vote as they see fit until such time as potentially budget or something where council may direct them how to vote. But in every board meeting, they vote effectively their conscience as independent representatives of the City of Berry. Council could allow that to continue at this amalgamation meeting or council could give them specific direction that says, as Representative Berry, you will cast our X amount of votes in favor of X or Y. So you can be very prescriptive or free-flowing.
Okay, thank you.
So then lastly, I guess my question would be, is it just a letter we're talking about or do we need to table a formal vote, knowing that this is going to be triggered?
We're not at the vote stage yet.
Okay.
So basically, there's a, call it a notice of motion is being put out there by Oromodonte and what the NVCA is, or representatives who sit on the NVCA are going back to try to say to the individual who's putting the notice of motion on, hey, are you sure this is the direction you want to go? And that's my interpretation of it. That may not be accurate, but that's my interpretation. I've been ignoring you for a very long time. I'm sorry, Counselor Harris.
No, you haven't, Mayor Nettle. I've just been quietly noodling over here. Just through you, Mayor Nettle, to CEO Proust, I just wanted to clarify, you gave some great detail on the process and I'm wondering if one of the positive outcomes of this motion from Counselor Harvey is that we signal, we're signaling to Oromodonte early in the process where Berry stands, therefore they might have time to reflect on whether they go through that whole process and the cost and time associated. Is that, is that a, did I capture that correctly or am I being overly optimistic on that?
Through you, Mayor Nettle, to Counselor Harris. Now, Counselor Harris, I think you're bang on. Counselor Harvey's motion is really separate from the formal process of deciding the amalgamation, but it clearly would be, if supported here tonight, an indication that the City of Berry will not be supporting amalgamation at that to-be-named-later meeting.
Okay, thank you. With that said, I do think it's important to signal to our partners in Oromodonte where we stand and if others are doing it as well, it might help maybe interrupt a process before it gets too far where it's going to cost time and money and not have a result that is satisfactory. So I like the idea of the motion and the letter and I will support this. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? I'm going to, I'm going to close out on this. There's actually three issues I have. One is that I have zero information. And if somebody wants to get the support of someone else around this table, we make calls and then we debate it in public like we just did, but we do so with factual information, which to me doesn't appear to exist at this point. Two, and I'm going to argue on both sides of the issue for a second, the interesting part that I found when we did the tree bylaw, yes, I'm going back to the tree bylaw, is probably, was that the Lake Simcoe Regional Conservation Authority had a bylaw that basically required the replacing of every single tree and/or by the hectare, right? And the Nautu-Wasaga did not. And that really shocked me because my perception was always that the Nautu-Wasaga was much more stringent than the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority. And the, I think the argument that's being put forward is they're not easy to deal with and not easy to work with, but I actually saw in that form, we took it away from the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority, we actually didn't take it away from the Nautu-Wasaga because it never existed. And so the argument that one is better for developers than the other, I think I would have actually reversed that in that case. The third piece, and you know how much I like the tree planting and bylaw we have, so I'm glad we did it. The third piece is this, is that the Lake Simcoe Conservation Authority has a much different mandate than the Nautu-Wasaga. And that mandate is actually driven by legislation, not just by who has the, you know, who's run more efficiently or anything like that. In fact, the Lake Simcoe Protection Act gives them special powers, gives them special funding, special ability to charge municipalities funding and so on and so forth. There was a change on the federal level when, just before, I guess, 2013, 14, when I was, I believe, on that committee, that changed it to the Lake Simcoe, the federal part of it, the Lake Simcoe-Nautu-Wasaga, I think, protection funding or something like that. And when the group that was overseeing the funding, like, it was completely different, just completely different. The requests for funding were, you know, one is, when you look at what Counselor Harvey's saying in terms of river-based versus lake-based, like, the lake, the real movement there was to do with... to do with the phosphorus levels, right? And how do we lower them, working with municipalities, bringing in maybe new tech, et cetera. And over at Nada Wasaga, it was a lot of habitat-related focus, uh, which you just don't get the same inside of a massive basin. So I actually take that argument and I accept it. I hope that both of them are incredibly efficient and operate very well, uh, but when I look at it from, from my standpoint, you know, this is the second time, I believe, I voted on this. The first time I voted on it, it was the Georgias', David and Tony Georgias, who, uh, were fighting to abolish, uh, the, the conservation authority, Nada Wasaga Conservation Authority. I'm going on memory, so maybe it was one and not both, but I'm thinking they did it together. And, um, I, I didn't support it then. And so I want to be consistent with my, uh, my approach from 15 years ago and, uh, and recognize that each of these have a very specific, uh, angle and a very specific set of needs. So I'm gonna call the vote, uh, on this.
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote's been requested by Counsel Harvey, Madam Clerk. That's over to you. It's out of my hands.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I'm going to start with Counsel Reema.
No.
Counselor Nixon?
Yes.
Counselor Congle?
Yes.
Counselor Corser?
Yes.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Negusi?
Yes.
Um, Counselor Harvey?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Morales?
Yes.
And Counselor Hamilton?
Yes.
And Mayor Nuttall?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, uh, thank you. And that's gonna go over to Deputy Clerk. Okay, we're now gonna go to inquiries. Any members of council have an inquiry this evening? I'm not seeing any. We're gonna move to, you have an inquiry?
Yes.
Over to you, Counsel Reema.
Um, I just wanted to follow up on, on this letter that we're now sending to, uh, who are we sending it to? Oro Medonte and just about everybody else. Um, is that going to include, um, asking for more information?
Like, I'm gonna outline that we can't make a decision without information.
That I'm happy with, yes.
Yeah. Um, I'm gonna go across to announcements. Well, don't fight about it.
All right, I just wanted to, um, bring attention to tomorrow evening. Um, the Berry Art Club is having their, celebrating their 75th anniversary with a gala, and I just wanted to highlight that because the Berry Art Club has a very storied past within our community and they were actually, um, one of the founding groups that started Kempinfest 53 years ago. So they've done actually a lot in our community and they've had some pretty famous artists that have been members. And, uh, once you start digging into actually their history, it's very, very interesting and very surprising. So I invite anyone to look up Berry Art Club and take a look at all the fantastic stuff they do, including the art classes that they have. They're really reasonably priced and, uh, membership is a good price too and you get lots of bonuses, so I just wanted to, uh, draw attention to that.
Thank you. Sorry, before I go to Counsel Congle, I just misspoke. Uh, you asked me a question on what's gonna be in there. My, my answer was, uh, that I'm gonna say that we can't support it until. The answer is actually, we don't support it and included in the reasons why is the lack of information, okay? So I, I actually just misspoke and I apologize for that. If the minutes can be, take that all into consideration, that would be fantastic. Uh, Counsel Congle.
Thank you, Mayor Nuttall. I just wanted to, uh, highlight, uh, a new addition within Ward Three. So I had the pleasure of sitting down with the Berry Sports Hall of Fame, uh, executive and, um, appreciating some of the work that they're doing around expansion of some of the highlights across our facilities, but we've got new display cases at the East Bayfield Community Center, so would welcome the public to go in and take a look at that. Uh, and in addition to that, maybe just to plug this morning, I had the benefit of going through the Simcoe Gray Foresters Museum, quite impressive, uh, and do welcome the public if you haven't been through those doors. It's an amazing, uh, array of donated and collected, um, memorabilia around our military heritage. So thank you to those volunteers and enthusiasts that keep the stories alive, uh, and the education quite present in our downtown, uh, and just would welcome people to take advantage of that now that it's nice weather. If you're looking for something to do, come through some of our city facilities.
Amazing, thank you. Uh, before I go, um, yeah, sorry, you go first. I've, I've got another announcement, that's fine.
All right. Um, I've got an announcement for, um, uh, hold the date for April the 23rd, Wednesday. Um, we're having a town hall in, uh, Ward One at the Park, uh, Parkview Center. Uh, Mr. Mayor, you're going to be there, I'm gonna be there, and, um, all of Ward One is invited to come and ask their questions and give their opinions, which, um, they are never short of. And, um, and that is a Wednesday night, but that week we're not meeting, so, um, we'll be meeting at Parkview.
You and I'll still be meeting. Perfect. Any other announcements? Uh, seeing none, before I go to the ones that I, that I have to give, which are short this evening, which you'll, I'll be happy with, I want to take a moment to recognize a business opening we did last week. I'm not sure if everyone saw this, uh, but I was so excited about it, I called, um, Ms. Banfield and said, uh, Ms. Banfield, I would like our entire planning and building services folks, uh, which is Bala and then, and Ms. Banfield, to go through this facility. And, uh, Clerk, yes, sorry, Counsel Reema, you were there, uh, with me as well. Was anyone else there?
No, not at all.
Yeah. And it was, uh, the opening of what used to be, I guess, either beside or part of Berry Metals on John Street. Uh, this was a, basically an electronic invitation we received, had no intelligence on it. Um, and when we got there, it was a metal fabrication plant, uh, that was focused on, uh, building, this is where Deputy Mayor Thompson would be better at describing what happens here, uh, but essentially studying and, uh, structure for, uh, prefabricated homes. And what I found incredible about it was they were saying to me, well, if you're looking at building a house, which I'm not, let's pretend I was, uh, and I had plans, I can walk my plans in there, they can then create it into, uh, CAD drawings using their product, engineered drawings using their product, and then they can fabricate it in three days and build it on-site in three days. And your total timeline, if you were to be, you know, start to end, where they can start going in and putting in, um, you know, electrical and plumbing and all the trades going in, was seven days. Like, bananas to me. Uh, I think it's important to highlight because it is maybe one of the options for the future of home building. They chose Berry, 70 employees going inside, uh, up to 500 individuals who will be, uh, installing across the province, decentralized, those jobs, those 500 probably aren't Berry, but the 70 are. Um, and included in that, engineering jobs and so on and so forth. I thought that was a really nice win, uh, for the city of Berry and, uh, something that we need to, uh, need to recognize. Um, here's the official announcements. The April events calendar from Rec and Culture Services is available and the events are happening in various recreation centers and cultural venues throughout April. So for that information, you can visit play.berry.ca. And the city of Berry is transitioning to automated cart collection for garbage and organics materials starting September 8th, 2025, that's September 8th this year. Berry property owners have until March 31st, so that is literally four days away, five days away, uh, to submit a request for the smaller 120-liter garbage cart instead of the 240-liter garbage cart, which comes, uh, both will come at no charge, but you have to register for, for the, uh, smaller one. Uh, for further information, go to berry.ca/curbsidecollectionchanges. And I'm, I'm gonna ask, uh, Bob, if there's any way that, you know, you could have something out there? No, for the 31st? Yes, okay, perfect. Uh, because if folks don't register, then they're gonna be, uh, left in a bit of an issue if they would, do want the smaller, the smaller, uh, cart. Deputy Mayor Thompson, I think you've got the bylaws at this point.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bills and these bills be read a first, second, and third time on this day and finally passed, Bill 24 to 29.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counsel Harvey, that leave be granted to introduce the following bills and these bills be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bills 24 to 29. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor carries, Deputy Mayor.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counsel Harvey. Leave be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second, and third time on this day and finally passed, Bill 30.
It's moved by Deputy Mayor Thompson, seconded by Counsel Harvey, that the confirmation bylaw leave be granted to introduce the following bill and this bill be read a first, second, and third time this day and finally passed, Bill 30. All those in favor? It passes. Can I have a motion to adjourn? I'm gonna go with Counsel Morales and Counsel Harris, uh, all those in favor of adjournment. It carries unanimously. Hope everyone has a wonderful week.